All five selectmen are present, as well as Town Administrator Sullivan and Town Council Bowen.
All right, pledge of allegiance. Let's see. Mr. Hurd, how about that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Announcements, we'll start with Mr. Slavin.
Good evening, everybody. First off, I'd like to wish a shanah to all the Jewish residents in the town of Wareham. This is year 5,780. It's Jewish New Year. It lasted two days, actually at sundown at, which is about 6 o'clock, the holiday ended. That's why I'm here today. I will not be here next week on Tuesday night because that sundown on Tuesday is the Jewish holiday of Yom Kippur, which is known as the Day of Atonement, which we have to atone for all our sins. We can't spend money, we can't drive, and we have to fast for 24 hours, et cetera. So I have plenty of sins as everybody else, so I'll be going out again so I can start it, start again next year and do it all over again. So I will not be here next week on Tuesday.
You have lots of sins, you're saying?
Oh yeah, I got plenty.
Okay, all right then.
People are here about the food truck event, so I'll let them explain all that when they come up as well for their permit. And that's all I have right now.
Jim, please.
No, go ahead. I'm all set.
Peter?
I'm good, thanks.
Oh, everybody's moving along today, all right. Citizens comments, anybody here to speak to the board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on.
I think you have one over there.
Do you?
I'm here, sorry. I should have been louder.
All right, come on down.
Actually, she's waiting for Trevor, right?
I am here for Trevor, yes.
Yeah, so wait till we get a call.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, you will call your name. This is, um, this is just general, like if people want to come up and say something, ask a question, whatever.
Okay.
This is different. Anybody else? All right. All right, next would be board comments. Mr. Slavin.
Okay. I want to make a comment about South Coast Hospital, Blue Cross Blue Shield. Just as a quick history, when I was quite young, one of my first jobs was working for Blue Cross Blue Shield, setting the rates for hospital reimbursement way, way back. It was always interesting. I was working technically for the rate-setting bureau of the state of Massachusetts, but getting paid by Blue Cross, setting a rate which then they, of course, would get reimbursed by, so there's no conflict there at all. The issue with Blue Cross Blue Shield right now is that South Coast Hospital is getting reimbursed at a substantially lower percentage than a lot of area hospitals around here. And if you compare it to, say, the Partners Beth Israel Group, et cetera, that percentage is substantially different. And what they're really asking for is just a fair deal of what their reimbursement is. It's not the hospital blowing up Blue Cross Blue Shield, it's Blue Cross Blue Shield insufficiently funding the hospital for the services provided. And I wish to have people understand it's not their choice. The other piece, just so you understand, is I spoke to someone from actually Harvard Pilgrim yesterday at Town Hall, and I had heard information, but she confirmed that Tufts Medical, which I have Tufts Medicare for her personally, and Harvard Pilgrim are going to be merging. So that's another option down the line, which, when you have to switch health plans, a lot of times you have to switch health groups. I had to do that. I had to leave the Stewart Medical Hawthorne Group and go to South Coast some years ago, which I lost like 28 years of doctors. This particular group that's coming in, I have no financial interest, but I want, I'd have people understand, it gives you access to Jordan or South Coast, almost everything else around here, including the Hawthorne Group as well. So that's just an option. If people get really nervous about Blue Cross and they're on a, like a medical plan, they have to change in November, that will be a pretty strong option for you. WCTV had their annual meeting, which I couldn't make because of the CERPAD Commission meeting. I believe they're going to go ahead and exercise their option to go ahead and purchase the old Town Hall. I think they were nervous about the FCC ruling about potentially limiting their revenue, but I think they feel that what they're going to receive anyways would be enough, and be sufficient enough to make it worthwhile. The other piece is Atlantic Marine, who's been in business for 30 years here in town, had a very nice party and stuff this past, I think it was Saturday? And... Yes, Atlantic, Atlantic Boats, Atlantic Marine, Bob. And I just wish John Cornish another 10 to 15 years before he retires. That's it.
Okay. Jim?
Nothing.
All right then. Mr. Titlewell?
Uh, I don't have anything either.
I'm good.
You're good. All right, so I did get something today in my email from, uh, from Affordable Trust, Jim, requesting Affordable House Trust voted 3-0-0 to request time with Town Attorney to review the grant agreement and so on?
Yeah, they're, um...
This is actually in the purview of the Town Administrator. They should turn it over to the Town Administrator, okay?
I understood that, well, we will do that.
All right, just...
What's in the purview of that?
This, the, to sign off on these requires the Town Administrator's.
Right, but these are drafts, these are drafts that they use from Sandwich, Massachusetts.
Yeah.
They want to know if they would work in our town by changing the addresses and, um...
Well, this was...
...review units and whatnot. And this is through the Affordable Housing Trust. So, I mean, if you say it's through the Administrator, fine. It was my understanding that they'd been requested a long time ago.
Well, this is only for the Latham Project. That's all I got. Did they want something else?
Well, basically, the two, the two contracts that they use in the town of Sandwich, they want to use similar ones. They want to know if these contracts would be acceptable to the town, both legally and otherwise.
So that's in his purview, so if you get the contracts to him, if he needs to have them reviewed, he will.
I didn't, I thought we signed off on the, um, on that.
No, that's procurement.
Because we're a trust.
It's procurement, unfortunately.
Okay, I'll explain, I'll tell them that. I'm sure, I'm sure you...
Yeah, I mean, I'm not trying to stop them or anything, it's just that I don't want to bypass the Town Administrator. If he, if it's something that he thinks he can't handle, he can shuffle it off to...
To council himself, yeah.
To council himself.
Well, we, I believe I can just send you some, yeah. And one of them's just a canned document with the state. And the other one, you know, a few things need to be changed, I think. But they just wanted to know if they would be acceptable. And I don't believe we release funds until the project is completed anyhow.
That's correct.
Okay. This is a convoluted process, but thank you.
Welcome to government.
Welcome to government. All right, let's move on to appointments, reappointments. We got some library trustees, or Library Board of Trustees. Do we?
Yes, we do.
All right, let's do that.
We have Joanne Robertson.
Is Joanne here? Nope, well, we're doing it anyway. Go ahead.
Okay, I move that we appoint Joanne Robertson to the Board of Library Trustees for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2022.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. All right, 5-0-0. All right, next up is appointments to the Charter Review Commission.
All right.
Actually, there's something I, uh, she's here for this one here, just where she's got her child here. Do you want to just take this one?
Oh yeah, sure. Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, it's just the one day for Trevor. We're familiar with...
Come on down.
...the operation.
Just come right up.
We're very familiar. Come on down and sit at the microphone there and...
Sounds good.
You can bring him with you. I mean, come on.
Wait, come on.
Smile, you're on TV. Might be five people watching.
He might have something to say.
He might.
He might tell us, "Look, you take care of this."
Hopefully it's appropriate.
If not, we need to be interested.
It's their child, you know.
Spice things up a bit. Okay, we have all the paperwork here for Trevor is looking for a one-day liquor license for October 5th from 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Is there any discussion or questions?
I'll make one.
Well, well, under the 30 limits, so there's no issue.
This would be, I think, the 21st. I actually ran into him last week and we went to look at the wonderful Bathhouse Cupola. And I talked about this, and next year he is planning on putting in for a seasonal. He had thought that there was some great rigmarole with this and it would be expensive and difficult, and I said, "No, it's very simple," so...
All right, any...
...year he'll get something from April to, you know, mid-December.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. You're all set.
Nice, thank you very much.
Thanks. He'll be ready in the office for you tomorrow.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Good night, young fella.
Good night.
Night. All right, now the Charter Review Commission. Bring them out here.
The article is coming out.
Here we go, all right. So we're going to go and vote on them, I guess. We'll start with, uh, start with the first one and we'll go from there. All right.
Okay, I move that we approve Holly Van Nest for the Charter Review Committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 5-0-0.
Okay, next up, I move that we approve Judith Whiteside to the Charter Review Committee.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes?
Um, we haven't interviewed Judith yet.
Yeah, she wasn't available the last time.
Just like the, um, I think there's another applicant we haven't interviewed.
Yeah, and we're going to vote on them. I mean, we'll vote on them both.
But I don't think she's in there.
Uh, well, she's going to be brought up. Are you talking about Morales?
Morales, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to vote on her. I think she's in there.
Should have been on the list.
She should, she should have been on the list.
But she, it said she hadn't been interviewed.
She hasn't been interviewed...
I think we should follow the same process.
Well, just so you know, she hasn't been interviewed because we've tried to interview her like 12 times.
No, and she, she explained, she sent a, um, an email to us on November 3rd, I mean, September 3rd, saying she wouldn't be available two days, but yet we put her on the agenda. She also sent us a email in the summer saying what day she would be available, yet we put her on, uh, would not be available. We put her on the agenda for those.
All of those emails that she sent us, she didn't send us till after the fact?
No, no, I've got the stuff. So anyhow, I'm just, I'd like to just be the same for everybody.
Well, we're going to vote on her, so don't worry about it, okay?
She's on the list.
So any, any other discussion with Judy Whiteside? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining?
Opposed, because we're not following processes.
So 4-1-0. Okay, next?
Next, I move that we approve Peter Dunlop to the Charter Review Committee.
Second.
Motion made by Judy, seconded by...
By Mary.
Hold on. Seconded by, I'm sorry. Judy, Mary. I see that, I was talking, I got into Judy right away. Seconded by Alan. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm not going to vote for any elected officials to serve on the Charter Review Committee. I think if the selectmen are barred by the Charter from serving on other boards, then I don't know why. It's kind of interesting. I was talking about this with the Town Clerk, and she said, "Oh, I think it's all elected officials that can't serve on other boards." And I said, "No, the Charter actually says the selectmen can't serve on other boards." So if selectmen can't serve as elected, as elected officials, we can't serve on these boards, then I don't think any elected official should be appointed.
Uh, I kind of agree with that, by the way. Besides, I think they have too much to do besides...
It's supposed to be a fresh look, supposedly, you know?
Is he elected, um...
He's an elected sewer commissioner.
He's elected to the sewer commissioners, yeah. Go ahead, Alan.
If you go back to the, uh, we did it 10 years ago, we had Mary Ann Silva on that committee.
Yeah, and she wasn't elected officially, yeah.
So we're basically setting a new precedent that...
Well, maybe he wants to set a new precedent, you know, that's, that's fine.
Well, respectfully, I disagree.
That's fine. I wasn't part of the, I wasn't part of the appointment process the last time because I would have raised the same issue then.
Thank you.
Okay, motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So it's 3-2-0. Next?
Next, we have Sandy Slavin. I move that we approve Sandy Slavin to the Charter Review Committee.
All right, motion made by Mary, seconded by...
I'll second that.
So can, seconded by Jim. Any discussion?
Because of family membership, I really need to abstain on this one.
Okay.
I have to take the same position I took with Mr. Dunlop.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Yes. So it's 2 to 2, which means the motion doesn't carry. Next?
I move that we approve Mary Ann Silva to the Charter Review Committee.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion?
I would hope that this august body, when it forms, would choose her as chairman.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Next?
Next, I move that we approve Robert Fitchinmeier to the Charter Review Committee.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
I move that we approve Nan Evans to the Charter Review Committee.
Just a comment also. Actually, no problem with Mr. Fitchinmeier, but I think he's elected to upper case board, just so you know.
Is he?
Hmm.
It's fine, keep going.
I didn't know that.
I did.
Well...
That's a problem.
Is that an elected position, though? Let's ask Madam Moderator, she knows everything.
Well, then, it's, you want to, you want to do it again?
Yeah, we do the votes, so I'm consistent.
All right, so...
Don't mind.
I think I take back my...
Somebody want to ask for reconsideration?
I would rather see him on, his skills.
Well, that's okay, you can...
And his background is really strong.
He's probably got the votes.
He might have the votes. I mean, the other one did, so, Peter did, so maybe he will. But you want to, you make a motion to reconsider?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to reconsider on the basis of...
All right, we'll see if you get a second. Motion to reconsider by Peter, second.
You don't have to, you don't have to second it.
Do I have a second?
If you don't second, my motion doesn't go, so I've made my point, we're done.
All right, there's no second, okay.
So we're done.
All right, move on. Next one.
Nan Evans, I move that we approve her to the Charter Review Committee.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Jim. Any more discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
This last one...
How many do we have so far?
One, two, three, four, five, six...
We have to have nine total.
Well, they can have five to open.
If we have more than five, we can go forward.
Exactly, we can go forward. There's two people you got to have, uh, that you got to put on there. The paperwork might not be there, but we're going to do them anyway, okay? Do Morales, all right?
Mrs. Morales.
And you want to do Mrs. Shaverhood, right?
Shaverhood applied?
Yeah, she did.
She did.
She, she applied as well.
Wasn't there one more?
Who was the other one? There was another one, but she, she was, what's her name, from the school committee, but she, she...
That was Joyce Bakayaki.
Joyce, but she said no.
Okay.
Didn't we also have, uh...
We had a couple of others that backed out at the last minute.
Someone moved out of town.
Yeah, somebody moved out. There was a couple that kind of backed out of the whole thing.
The name escapes me, but the lady who's on the minor forest committee, didn't she, didn't she apply as well? Mary, you know who I'm talking about.
Linda?
Yeah, Linda Sharif, yeah.
She, there's a conflict if someone else is on there, she doesn't want to be there, so I'm not even going to bother voting on this.
We had a problem where she wouldn't be on the committee if somebody else was on the committee.
Correct.
So...
I wasn't aware of that.
And the other person is on the committee, so...
Yeah, so this...
I, I just thought that the right thing to do is, if somebody can't stand to be on a committee because there's one person on there they don't like, then it's probably a good idea not to put them on the committee to begin with.
Yeah, because I think when we did it 10 years ago, whatever, we had a couple conflicts in the committee. It made it very difficult.
A couple?
Yes, a couple, Peter.
All right, go ahead, next?
Okay, next is Lisa Morales, and I'm, I'm not making the motion to approve that, so...
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Motion by Jim to approve Lisa Morales. Do I hear a second? I don't hear a second. All right, so the motion doesn't carry. Next?
I move that we approve Kim Shaverhood to the Charter Review Committee.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm a little, this is difficult for me because I, I'm a little concerned on the charter because of the person's position with the school and everything, and it has to do with the charter issues about the school budget, you know, how it's submitted, et cetera.
Not necessarily.
Not sure whether that will be open or not.
Well, I, I think it's not a bad, is that a conflict, by Rich, for her to be on the Charter Review Commission?
With your permission, Mr. Chairman?
Let's face it, it's not a bad idea to have a mixture on there, and if somebody from the school department, that's, that should be okay. I would think.
Well, she'd have to file a disclosure with the Town Clerk, with her appointing authority, the school committee. And that, that would cover most situations, but if there was a specific, um, thing that came up, say, that pertained directly to the superintendent, you know, as opposed to maybe just matters of general policy, then she would probably have to abstain from participating on that particular matter. So there, so I'd say there isn't a blanket man on the appointment. Uh, there would have to be a disclosure filed with both the Town Clerk and the appointing authority, and then she'd have to watch carefully as things develop to see if anything that came up that, you know, really was specific to her, and then we would address that as it came up.
Okay.
My question, Rich, with that...
The school itself, or budgets, or anything like that, since she wouldn't benefit from it?
Well, no, those are matters of general policy.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, under those circumstances, if we appoint under that, I have no problem with it.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? That'd be you, right, Alan? You're voting against her?
No, I voted aye.
You vote aye, okay, good.
You did vote aye.
Okay, so it's 5-0-0. All right.
Any more?
And that's everybody, right? Now, how many did we end up with for this, for this start?
One, two, three...
I want to try to promote and get a few more people in.
Five, six, seven.
So seven, so we could use three more, no, two more.
Well, that's, you know what, the, the good thing is, is they're starting out with an odd number, so any votes they take will be decided by a majority.
All right, so hopefully we can get two more people that want to step up and be on the Charter Review Commission, okay? That would be very nice. All right, moving on.
Before we finish, Patrick?
Yeah.
Normally what we did last time is we had a selectman, select person, really, sit there for the first meeting if they had any questions.
I can do it.
Because of my experience before and my ability to tell them where to go, because we usually do the changes by special act, not the normal way, which takes like two to three years, I can, I'm going to volunteer, if you want to assist them when needed, if they want it. I don't want to basically be there at their meetings, but I want to be available if they have questions. It'll save a lot of time.
Well, why don't we, um...
They, they don't submit articles or acts or anything.
No, they have to submit it to us, actually.
Okay, yeah, no, I...
No, the Charter Review Committee's brought forth articles twice, one to be a change of government, and the second time, I think I submitted 45 articles.
Oh, no, they do. They bring articles up, but the articles come to us first, so...
Yeah, it's the same procedure.
Same procedure as everybody else, yeah.
They, they make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen.
No, actually, they make, they make a report to Town Meeting, regardless of whether they come forward with any articles. So they've, you know, if they come up with articles, that's fine, but that's actually not the required item. The required item is the report to Town Meeting. Look, they might show up at Town Meeting and say, "Everything's hunky-dory, we got nothing we think should be changed," so that could happen.
But the articles that were written last time around were written by the Charter Review Committee.
Okay. All right, so...
Yes, we know, many of them.
You're welcome.
Tons of them.
So maybe, you don't want to have to go to all those meetings, you're kind of busy.
No, I'm just saying I wouldn't go to the meeting unless they requested it.
How about if I put you and Peter to take turns going to the meetings, at least for the first couple, to get them started?
Well, all of this is the first one, then they just, they'll know that if they have an issue, they contact us.
Yeah.
Okay, all right?
No problem with that.
Okay, fine, let's do that, all right?
Just, I want to make it easier.
Yeah, that's fine.
You know, because we're going to have to also set a timeframe for this.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. That's great.
Yeah, they're going to have to know what the timeframe is, should they want to submit articles.
Yeah, we'll give them...
I mean, they can write their report the night of Town Meeting and...
We're going to have to just...
Get up and read it if they want.
We're going to have to, uh, when everybody's ready, we're going to have to decide whether we give them one year or a year and a half.
Okay. All right, so next up would be the application for a change of beneficial interest for Red Robin International, DBA Red Robin Gourmet Burgers. Nobody's here.
Do you have anybody here from Red Robin?
Nope. Is there any, is the names all there and everything?
Um, yes.
So what's the change? Just tell us what the change is and...
Change of beneficial interest, so it's whoever their manager is.
These are almost silly, just so you know. They really have nothing to do with us.
No, this is more about reporting to the state who the corporate officers are and...
The Cliff's Notes version of the change in here, so I think it's just the manager.
Just the manager? Well, it's not a change of manager.
No, it's got to be more than that.
That's a different thing.
It's probably some change in the, uh, the holding company's status.
That's probably what it is, yeah.
Yeah.
Date published, annual managers, town official, okay. Official of revenue certifies, down in the state, Red Robin International, Inc. is in compliance with its taxes. Hold on, it's just going to take me a second, so bear with me, guys. Number of business interests, application, change of officers. Okay, so there's officer changes, that's what it is. Change of officers, all right? And the applicant contact, yes. Yeah, there's a sheet here with the change of officers. So they got a new director, uh, they got a new principal, and they have, they have two new principals.
Do we know any of these people?
Lynn Esch Schuffler and Michael Lawrence Kaplan.
And where are they from?
And one is from, looks like Greenwood, Virginia, and the other one is from Dallas, Texas, okay? So they're nobody we own, they're just changing corporate officers. They can do that, all right? So we got a change in two corporate officers.
All right, I move that we approve the change of the two officers.
All right, motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Okay, application for the Village, the Wareham Village Association. All right, so I just want to let you know one thing, too, is you don't have the sheet in here with the sign-offs from everybody?
Mary was explaining that to me. So in the past, when I've gotten that sheet and it's gotten hung up somewhere, I've gone to the Board of Selectmen's Office and asked if I could personally bring that form, it was like at Menard's Office, I think, once, and I was told no. So I don't have any recollection of us physically getting that. I certainly will.
Well, you know how to do this, you've done this before, probably about 10,000 times.
Maybe, a few times, yeah. Um, so we're talking about the actual event permit approval, right?
Yeah, you know how it has, in the packet it has a thing for sign-offs by the police and municipal maintenance and everybody.
So this is the first year that those were ever supplied to me, but in this case, no, because you were the one that applied. So I've had to ask for those from Cassie, Sweeney, so...
All right, so I'm going to ask you to go, we're going to, we'll probably vote for this, but we're going to, you know, we'll see how it goes. But when we do, I'm going to need you to go to the office because it'll be subject to getting those sign-offs.
Of course, sure.
All right, awesome. All right. Anybody have any questions of the, the young ladies?
I just have one. What, uh, you had talked about, I overheard your conversation with Patrick earlier, about closing off Merchant's Way at the Jug Shop, which I understand because you, you know, you need to divert traffic there to keep it from logjamming down at your other barricade behind the fire station, but have the businesses in that stretch been notified that their customers won't have parking?
They can park there. They, you, you can go in there and park at those businesses, you're just going to have to go back out the other way. It's just not going to be a, a throughway. They can't come into the parking lot where the festival's going to be.
Right.
So they can still access those businesses and the business owners can still park there.
Okay, so it won't actually be closed per se. Will you have a volunteer there to tell people?
It's just closed to through traffic.
Okay, so you're going to have signage there that says, "Closed to through traffic, business parking only," or something like that?
Correct. Yeah, the Police Department, Flannery approved that. He actually wanted us to not have through traffic. He'll have a, one of his lighted signs at the end of Merchant's Way.
Okay.
Letting the note that... Letting people know that they can park, but it's just, you can't...
Right, parking available, no through traffic, that sort of thing. That, yeah, that's good, yeah, because you obviously don't want people driving through there.
Correct. Yeah, he, um... We have the whole trailer of their, of their horses deployed.
Go ahead, Jim.
Has it been signed off by the Police Department and Municipal Maintenance and...
That's what we were talking about earlier.
So it's going to be pending?
She, it's correct.
All, all the signatures being submitted during the week? All, all the signatures being submitted during the week?
Right, now, they've already talked to the police about how many details they need and all that.
Right, we've met with all of the-
All that stuff, the meetings have already taken place, they just don't have the sign-offs.
So is this, can I ask a que, is this new that we take that sheet? Because I wasn't able to take it before, when I did the swamp festival.
Well, she should have given it to you, I, I don't know why, I'm gonna have to call and ask the question.
Okay.
But typically, they take them around, they get them signed, and then it goes in the packet with everything else. It's part of the pa, part of the packet.
I think in the past, what we've done is-
I think it's always-
We've done it internally before.
Done internally, and then- I don't remember having to do that myself, honestly. And then, this isn't spit out until internally that form gets back to your office, was my understanding.
Well, while you're doing the meetings with them, it's easy to get sign-offs, so you can just-
Oh, I'll do it, I just wasn't aware that, that was on us. Okay, no sweat.
All right, okay. All right.
All right, so-
Our office used to do it.
Yeah.
Well, I think we stopped that, though. I think we stopped it, and we-
Whatever it is.
Well, we did today, anyway.
I know, 'cause I had to do one not too long ago, and I had to go around and do all the sign-offs.
Okay.
Let's, we'll clarify.
No sweat.
Thank you.
We'll get it straight.
We'll be consistent, over we do it, right? We'll make a policy.
A what?
Oh, boy, here we go.
Policy.
That's, not a bad idea.
It isn't, actually.
But the fact is-
Nineteen dash oh four.
The fact of the matter is that it's, the packet, the package that we use was completely done over by Judy Whiteside when she was here, and it includes that form. So that form should be being used by them, and, you know, it's not up to us to go around and chase and talk to the police and talk to everybody. It's really up to the group to go and do that. And it's easy for them to do, because they have to go talk to them anyway.
Right.
So, you know, I, it should be given to you, and I'm gonna take care of it tomorrow, okay?
Got it.
Thanks. All right, now, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the one-day liquor license for the, okay, Wareham Village Association.
Subject to the receipt of the approvals.
Pending the approval page, um, for October 5th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by, I heard, Preetah. Any discussion?
Preetah.
Preetah.
Wow.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain, it's unanimous, five zero zero. By the way, I want to thank you, and I really love the fact that you guys are working together.
Thank you.
That is just really awesome.
We're very excited.
And actually, while they're here, do you want to just go over the event one more time?
Yeah, what's happening?
Yeah, sure. Have at it. Okay. Um, so, our first-ever, uh, fall food truck festival will take place Saturday. Um, we each, on our own, uh, wanted to do a food truck festival, and ran into each other somewhere, and said, "Hey, I want to do a food truck festival," and she said, "I do too," and well, it only made sense for us to do one combined event. So, we have a great variety of vendors, um, we have about thirteen, thirteen food vendors. Fourteen food, yep. A few of which are actual trucks, um, and then folks that will set up tents and tables, that kind of thing, and then another twenty-five? Twenty-seven. Twenty-seven other various vendors, crafters, um, services, all kinds of great stuff. We have a couple of great bands coming, um, and, uh, lot of support from, you know, AD Makepeace, they're gonna let us borrow some picnic tables, and Don't Trash Wareham will let us borrow some barrels, and we have, you know, dumpster, porta-potties, all that good stuff secured. We're working with, um, Sixteen Twenty Winery, and also Frida's. And also, a company called American Mule, they'll, uh, just give out samples of a, a low alcohol product that qualifies as beer. And, uh, yeah, we're just excited to do it, the weather looks really great for Saturday, and, um, it's just, you know, we know each other well enough that, uh, we can get along well enough to put on an event. We all know how tricky putting on events can be, and, uh, you guys are always so cooperative and, uh, agreeable. It's helpful, you know?
So after you finish eating, we have wheelbarrows to get us to the cars?
Right? Well, we have a shuttle, Gatra is providing a shuttle, so there'll be that, um-
Because it sounds like it's gonna be a lot of eating.
Yeah, let's hope so, right? Let's hope so. So we're looking forward to it, and, uh, you know, maybe next year, we'll try it in a different location, maybe have it an onset and flip it around. Right. Yeah.
Awesome, all right.
So we're excited. I have one more quick question. As far as the beer vendor is concerned, who's sitting in the back of the room, do you have a preference of how he serves that? Cup, bottle?
Cold.
Quickly.
Can? Does it matter?
Cold and quickly.
Because he's not gonna do kegs, correct? So.
Well, you know, bottles could maybe problematic for you, because you could end up with broken bottles all over the place, but it's up to you. I mean, if you want to clean them up, that's up to you.
We do have a dumpster on the premise, which is gonna be much bigger than we need.
I mean, we've never set any standard, one way or the other.
No, we haven't, I don't believe, so.
Okay. Cool. No, is your answer. Yay! Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Appreciate it. Yeah, good luck.
Good job. All right, discussion and vote whether to recommend, uh, this is gonna stay on here, obviously, till we're done.
Oh, the warrant articles?
Yeah.
No, I think we still haven't gotten, come up with any, any new things, right?
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, I believe the submission of free cash will be on October, hopefully, on October 21st, so we're gonna be way, way late on that, so.
When will we have motions, though? Because those are boilerplate motions, you can just leave space for the number, you know what I mean? And then they just gotta plug the number in.
Yeah, the, the motion's the article, and then you just do a grid underneath, basically.
Yeah, right, so, can you, uh, when can we get the motions done?
I don't know, October 21st?
No, no, that's not gonna be good. No, I don't think that's gonna be good.
So, whenever we can get together, we'll get them on there.
What are we waiting to, uh, finish to vote on?
Well, we're waiting for-
Articles for audit?
Capital-
Capital plan.
Uh, bills, is it bills?
Yeah, right now, there's, uh, there's nothing on any bills, but, you know.
You've been paying the bills, so.
Just, just, just one point, uh, you know, we do also have the WPCF funding request for process improvements. Um, I am curious, did anybody go to the Finance Committee, and if so, did they, I, I'm just curious as to who presented to them?
It's tomorrow, isn't it?
No, right here, it lists the Finance Committee as having voted eight zero zero.
Well, we have a Finance Committee member here.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I might ask?
Yes, sure. Mr. Hurd?
Uh, I was not in attendance.
You were the one person who wasn't there.
One person who wasn't there.
Not there.
Well, isn't that the luck? Was Madam Moderator there?
Yeah.
Oh, wow, I whiffed. Wow. What are the odds?
Swing and a miss.
All right, I'm, I was just curious, because, you know, as we had sort of discussed previously, um, it would be good to have, uh, you know, the engineering people come in before us and talk about what this entails, what sort of technologies they're using, where they've been used previously, and where they've worked, and so on and so forth, especially for a capital item this size.
So, Ms. Chairman, if I may, I, I'm just, if I'm remembering properly, they've already applied for the grant. The grant would pay, well, actually, loan, right, a zero-interest loan, would pay for nine out of the ten million dollars. That loan wouldn't be awarded till, I believe it's October, or, you know, September, August. Why, it, with such a big amount, why don't we, why are we bringing this up now, when we haven't had presentations?
When's it, when's it due? When's the application due?
It's, they've already submitted the application, but just because you submit it, even if it gets awarded, you don't have to accept it. In fact, we did it last time, because they submitted the application and never sought approval for it.
Well, I, I had hoped to get them in here next week, so.
It's on the warrant, so, I mean, it's, it's going to the body no matter what.
Yeah.
But I guess at this point, my, my question is, you know, in order for us to, to decide whether to recommend, you know, we're gonna need more information than I think, and frankly, more technical information than we're gonna get from the, the sewer commissioners themselves, and, or even the sewer superintendent, I really think.
I'm hoping that they're coming up with that for us, and, and hopefully, we can get it in here for next week.
Yeah, because it's gonna be difficult to vote, spend that kind of money unless we hear from a technical person that it's gonna work.
Did you say that we had, they were getting a nine-million-dollar grant?
Loan.
Loan, zero percent, zero percent, loan.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, grant is one thing.
Regardless, one or the other, it has, whether they got the loan or not, something has to be done correctly, or do we just put a mor-
No question about it, Jim.
Or do we just put a moratorium on it and say, "Hey, nothing until we can get things fixed."
Well, it's, Jim, it's, it's those people have been sitting there a long time, needing to get rid of these odors.
Well, that, that's my concern, it's, nobody is-
Is the solution.
Right, nobody's proved to us the solution. We've spent, you know, uh, four or five hundred thousand on podsies for the solution, um, and there were some things the engineers didn't know, due to the pressure of forcing up the, uh, the grease and stuff. Okay, but, you know, we can't be the test case for everything, so, we can't afford that, so.
And frankly, for ten million bucks, we could probably buy up the neighborhood and solve the problem permanently.
Well, let's see if they come up with, uh, next week, and we'll see what happens, okay?
Yeah, and I'm not sa, I'm not saying those, the people don't, yeah, I'm not saying the people don't deserve a solution, I'm not saying the, the, the station doesn't need to be upgraded, but we're gonna do this, and then potentially do another mega project down to the sewer outflow, and do multiple other projects. I mean, it's, this is gonna be ten million, twenty million, another ten, this is, it's scary stuff.
Real numbers.
Are we still paying off that twenty-two million we did? Are we all done paying?
No, we've still got that. We get a hundred and eighty-three grand from Bourne on that, too, so.
Well, the outflow thing is a whole nother story, and that's problematic, as far as I'm concerned.
So, it's, uh, sewer is one of the most important things for economic development, for lifestyle, and, you know, for being able to build, but we can't afford to not do it correctly the first time.
Exactly.
But what happens if we don't move forward and do something?
Well, we're gonna find out.
Are we gonna be told that we have to do it, and that this is what you're gonna do?
Well, you know, it was funny, we were told that we had to sewer areas before, it turned out we didn't have to, there was none, so, every time somebody, as a bureaucrat, I'm bad in this case, every time somebody tells me I have to do something, it's, I say, "Prove it, prove what we need to do, that's gonna fix it."
Fair enough.
But don't ever say that to me, Jim, please, I'll get upset then, it'll make me sad.
Just as a comment, Patrick is playing with his phone.
What do you got there?
He learns if I watch in U.S.
I know that. Just as a comment, I went through the latest version of the capital plan for the five, you know, the five-year spread. I totaled everything out, not including the potential of the, uh, project to have the outfall go from us back out through roots, you know, six and twenty-eight to the Maritime Academy. It's eighty-six point five million dollars, looking at us. And not, not including that, no, just everything in general.
You're gonna make us all feel bad, huh?
Yes, so.
Wow, that's a lot of money, man.
That's a lot of money sitting out there that we're basically gonna be responsible for down the line, whether we can do it or not, that's a whole different story, but the bottom line is, we're basically, you know, we're at the point where we really can't press our taxpayers in this town much further.
Yeah.
So if we're gonna spend any money at all, even though we get twenty-year notes, we, and it spreads out, so it's not so bad, and you can't absorb it, the bottom line is that we really cannot afford to do something that's not gonna work. Because, and, we've done a couple of those already, they've been smaller.
Totally agree with that, and they have to come in.
They've been half a million dollars, whatever, but I'm not gonna vote for something that is not gonna work. I just can't put that on the taxpayers.
I don't blame you.
And then come back and say, "Sorry."
All right, next up, okay, we're gonna move on. Discussion and vote to ratify, ratification for the Town Administrator's appointment of town employees. Okay, so there's a section in the charter that says that the selectman, uh, after notification from the Town Administrator for appointments, that we would, uh, we have the right to, uh, vote either for or against it, um, and let him know why, and of course, then he can't hire that individual. Now, what we've done in the past, every year, so far, for the last, what, three years, I think, we have, sort of, given up our rights to, uh, all, everybody except for department heads, okay? And we've allowed the Town Administrator to do that on his own, like, uh, you know, for all the other people, he handles it. Um, I think it worked good, I don't think we've had any problems with it at all, um, when, uh, he wanted it, once upon a time, point of the police chief, we had no issues, we, he brought it in front of us, we handled that, it was perfect. Everything went very good, and it seemed to be fine. The problem with this one is, is that it requires a unanimous vote, and the reason for that is, is because no selectman has to give up that right, which means then it would just remain with us. So it's all up to everybody here, whether they want to continue that plan or not.[1426.83] here, whether they want to continue that plan or not. Alan?
On this particular plan, we kind of voted to just do department heads, because originally there was real questions, well, not every hire had to come through us, which was really a problem. But we did put into that particular policy, if I remember right, is that, once the Town Administrator makes an official offer, we have 14 days to ratify, or, or that person is considered hired.
That's correct.
So, you may and may not want to, you may want to modify the 14 days as well. Because it may not be, sometimes you may, like in the summertime, as an example, we meet every other week, you could run into an issue with a holiday as well. But that's what the policy is right now.
Well, once he noted, it's once he notifies us, and, you know, to be honest with you, you know, with Derek, I'm very comfortable, because I know that Derek, when he has an apartment head, he's going to, he's going to tell us. And when he knows we have a meeting, and we can handle it, and lots of times, he brings it right up to us here at the board, and says, I just appointed so-and-so, and we ratify it, and it's done. Usually right- You did that recently, in fact, if I remember correctly. So, I'm very comfortable with him, in my opinion. And if he wants to, you know, I don't see why we need to see every single employee, I just don't. It's just, it's just craziness. You know, he is the day-to-day person to take care of the town, and I think that he should have that duty.
I'm not disagreeing, I'm just-
I get what you're saying, yeah.
I'm just saying, maybe from 14 days to 21 days, it takes the stress off, whatever it is, just in case something slips.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I would vote to retain what we've been doing. You know, under the Charter, he's responsible for these people. We now have an Assistant Town Administrator for Personnel, who's also actively engaged in the hiring process. So, these people are being vetted at a couple of different levels before they're made town employees. The Charter makes him responsible for day-to-day operations, which includes the supervision of these people. And for us to try to, you know, potentially jump in there and substitute our judgment about the hires they make, where, that's getting us too far down into the weeds, that's taking us out of our role as policymakers, and putting us into the, into the day-to-day operations, to the extent that we would be deciding who would be, you know, performing the actual tasks that the town performs. I, I just don't think it's really a, a good thing for this board to get involved in. I think it politicizes then every single job, potentially, that gets hired, and it's going to become a question of who knows a selectman, who knows this, who knows that. And I just don't think it's an area where we should tread.
Okay, anybody else? Go ahead, Alan.
It's really simple. We hire someone to do the job, and then if we don't follow it this way, we end up interfering with that person doing the job, which ends up in that person not doing their job properly. And if you look at, say, baseball, football, you watch an owner start to overrule the general manager or the coach, it's usually disaster. So, this is the same.
Yeah, we don't want to be the Redskins.
Yeah, no.
Redskins is a lot more than just them. But my comment is that, you know, we have a tendency to get involved with day-to-day, whether on purpose or not, and all selectmen do, in every town that I've been involved with, and I see a lot of them, and this is one area we really need to stay out of.
Okay.
So, right now, you're saying the current policy, anyone below what the director's level?
Department head.
Department head level.
Whether they're called a director, or whether they're called-
You know, it'd be nice to see structure on that, to see, you know, what, what falls where, would come before us for our approval?
No, presently, we don't do that.
No, you don't do that?
We don't do that.
That's what's required, but we don't do it.
The Charter gives, yeah, what it does-
Okay, so, let me, let me, let me finish it. And anybody below that, who's appointed, we're supposed to be notified of, and we have 21 days, or 14 days?
No, it's the same for everybody. Right now, in the Charter, it's the same for everybody.
What we do is, every year, we voted to pass on our right to do that for the lower-level employees. We've retained it for department heads, but not lower-level.
We don't, I don't, I haven't really seen any appointments since I've been here, since April.
Yeah, because you, you would just, actually, we did, just recently.
The, no, the, what do you call them? The building commissioner brought that up at the meeting, and that was one of the-
He brought it to us.
So, that's the only level we'll be discussing. You don't even send us, like, notices of who we've hired, and who's working where, so we kind of know what departments and who's where, or nothing?
I don't know why the selectman would. I mean, that's-
I don't know, just kind of nice what's going on in town. I'm, I'm not saying we have to vote on hiring anybody below the department level, but it's, it would be nice to be notified of changes of, of employees, you know.
Might be nice to hear that somebody retired, and somebody was hired. I sort of get what you're saying.
Yeah, you know, and, and who the replacement is, and, and where they're working, or whatever. I mean.
Yeah, it's, I'm not saying they're bad, I'm just trying to do something.
Just an acknowledgement, you're saying, really?
Well, yeah, just so we kind of know what's going on, and what positions have been filled, and what positions are open, and, you know, we can have some discussion about it if we have to, if we-
It's none of our business.
Not, not of who?
No, well, we can't have any discussion about it, though, Jim. It's not up to us to discuss. If there were five openings, if he had five openings, it's not up to us to discuss at all. That's in his purview, completely 100%, not us.
What he wants to fill and not fill, and, and how-
That's up to him. Yes, it's up to him.
He could do it during his Town Administrator's report, though, if he wanted to.
Yeah, I mean, he could tell us if you want to know some information, yes. But there's nothing for us to discuss, other than, when he brought these people forward, we get 14 days right now to make a decision one way or the other.
I'm, I'm not asking about bringing people forward. I'm asking about positions and position openings, and which ones we're filling and not filling, moving forward, and how our government operates in relation to serving the people and the public. That's kind of what I'm looking like. Right now, we're, we're down one person in the office. What are we going to do there? That's in our office. So, I mean, I, I think it's important to have discussion about that, and, and the services are being provided. So, I'm just, you know.
Our office, we can have an input into, and we can discuss what's going on in our office.
That's good.
We're entitled to do that. But we're not entitled to get in, into his appointments and so on.
I'm not asking about appointments, just-
Status.
What's open, what's not open, what the plan is. Maybe it's not in our purview. I'm just, you know.
Yeah, that's, I mean, there's, it's sort of, the, the police chief has asked for an additional 20 police officers. Are those 20 open positions? And I'm not being facetious. There's, there, we used to have 43 people in the municipal maintenance department. Now, I'm down to 11. Does that mean I've got, you know, 20? And, you know, I'm just trying to figure out what really the thought process is.
I'm kind of saying, you know, working from current numbers.
Okay.
You know, and, and how we're going. I understand what you're saying, but it would be good to keep, be kept in the loop, and, you know, what areas you think need to be strengthened, or areas we can probably do without, and not, because the budget's getting tight or something.
And that's some of the, that's some of the input that the selectmen give me on the budget process as well. Let's, so for the past few years, the focus has been public safety and municipal maintenance. And one year, was trying to get somebody in inspectional services, and things like that. I take that into consideration, and try and draft the budgets.
Because when you make, when you make appointments and promotions in one area, the money has to come from somewhere.
Right.
So, where are you getting that? And, you know, is it impacting the other divisions, or is it not? And?
So, once we vote the budget, I can't take from one line or the other.
Right.
Only town meeting can do that.
So, that's, that's pretty much what I have to say on that. And I just thought it was for good discussion.
It is a good discussion.
Because it's like a void, you're operating in a void, and you don't even know what's going on, and, you know, appointments, or people leaving, or other issues, you know, legal issues, and the process that we do, we go through on, on notification, or knowing what the town's mired in. It'd be good to kind of know those things. I mean, sometimes I'm getting it off the street, and I'm like, oh, so.
That's usually a great place.
Yeah.
A lot of times, it's, it's-
I'm sure it's real.
No, it's on Facebook.
Well, it's got to be.
It's on Facebook, it's got to be real.
So, what's the exact motion you want to give them the authority to appoint below the department head level?
So moved.
There you go.
Notify us.
So, there it is.
A motion, it was a motion.
There was a motion, he just said so moved, from what you said. Appoint everything from, except for department head level.
Just make sure, and I'm sorry, interrupt, you're being clear on what, because there's, there's two parts to Jim. I, I already can appoint from department head down.
Right.
And, but what's the-
Ratification. In other words, what we're doing is, we're waiving our right to ratify below the department head level.
Correct.
That's what my motion is.
That's, okay.
Are we going to keep the timeframe at 14 days?
Yeah, that's adequate.
Yeah, I, I would ask that you not change that, and that's in the Charter anyways, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't expand it.
You had to change without changing the Charter, anyway.
Well, I would say I wouldn't expand on it, because I could have somebody that's without a job, that wants to work today, and I'm going to hold off on 21 days to, to bring them in, so.
Yeah, true.
You've got to wait 14 now, right?
Yeah, 14 is plenty.
So, 2011, it was, that was actually a big deal. You had people that were out of work, that were looking for it. 2019, everybody's got a job, it seems like, and it's, it's a little bit different. They all need a couple, a little bit more time.
Right.
Leaving the two weeks.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, just so we're, sorry. Just so we're clear, the Charter says, within, within 15 days following the day on which notice the appointment is filed with the board. So, the actual number's 15.
15, okay. So, it's 15 days.
You squeeze an extra day out.
See, you already got a day.
You already, we gave him an extra day already.
Come on.
Compromised.
Within 15 days.
All right, so I have a motion by Peter. Do I hear a second? I hear a second from Alan down the end. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 500. Okay, moving on. Thank you.
Kill that one.
Thank you. All right, next up, is any other town business not reasonably be anticipated to last 48 hours? Anyone?
No, no, no.
No.
Right, Town Administrator's report, please.
No, no, no.
We've hired, no, I'm just kidding.
I'd love to hear a report like that, of what positions we've filled, and we've hired, you know. How many can you have? I don't think you have, like, 30 a week you're doing.
No.
Now, what the public would know, too, when you're doing this.
So, I would ask for the 15th, we hold an executive session right now for the, we have four units for collective bargaining, the labors, steelworkers, the upper and lower, or A and B units. And clerical hasn't ratified yet, but we've come to agreement, so I just hold them on there pending, pending ratification. And we can add, we've got a couple more meetings, with at least, I believe, four other units. So, we'll try and get those done.
Okay. That's it?
That's it.
Oh, that was easy. Short night, eh? Were you on vacation?
She's celebrating the Jewish power.
Sure, yeah. All right, next up, let's see, liaison reports, let's see. Mayor, Mayor, Alan, go ahead. Go, Alan.
It's a humorous day today. Okay, last week, on Wednesday, I chaired, as usual, the SERP Ed Commission Meeting in Taunton for the Southeast Mass Region. What came up was really interesting was the MVP program, which we also had a presentation at Town Hall from the people that we hired. And the MVP program, I think people don't understand, is something that we basically qualified for by application, and then when they have what they call action grants, and we got a grant as well for that. The action grants are approximately 25% we have to supply of the total value of the grant, and that can be either cash or in-kind services. What's really interesting about this, when Governor Baker put this one through, it was really very loose and wide open, which is very unusual. I'm just going to read very quickly the, the different areas that are available, which the town can take quite a bit more advantage of, from more than just that one grant that we have. Detailed vulnerability and risk assessment in depth, public education and communication, local bylaws, ordinances, plans, or other management issues, redesign and retrofits, nature-based storm damage protection, drought prevention, water quality, water infiltration techniques, nature-based infrastructure and technology solutions to reduce vulnerability to extreme heat, or poor air control, air quality, nature-based solutions to reduce vulnerability to other climate change impacts, and ecological restoration, habitat management to increase resiliency. Probably every one of these, we have different programs that we have looking at us, that we can take advantage of, especially the redesign and retrofits, which covers wastewater treatment plants, et cetera, and culvert. So, I know Mr. Buckland has all this, but I just want everybody to understand that this particular program is open, and it has a lot of opportunities for the town of Wareham. That's number one. The presentation also by the Woods Hole Group was very well done, as well. I wish the woman who was presenting had a little more straight time to talk. She was asked questions frequently, which kind of chopped up the presentation somewhat. I've also gone ahead and, as per request of our chair, sent everybody copies of my master plan comments, through all 80 pages, which everybody should have received today by email. And the other last thing I have is, there's a thing called Blue Economy, which is the, basically, the marine technology businesses from Cape Cod all the way to Rhode Island. Federal government is behind this as well. I think Congressman Keating and the, basically, our candidate, who's now going to run for Senator, is going to be at the event at UMass Docmouth for this tech corridor meeting, which I'll be attending. And it basically has to do with developing marine-based technology and businesses, and promoting business all through the area. They've already received a $600,000 grant to start, and this will be a major financial input, and hopefully, we'll develop our different marine companies along the coast, and especially in Wareham. That's it.
All right, James, Jim?
It's tough to follow. The day after that vulnerability presentation, someone posted a picture of Main Street of Wareham, the 54 Hurricane.
Underwater.
It was, I'd say, three or four feet of water. So, it would have been nice to have there as a poster presentation, as you walked in, to see what the impact really could be of a severe storm. And I thought that was a good time, too, just, just seeing it the next day, you're looking, and you're saying, wow.
I think the Hurricane of '38 was nine feet.
It was worse.
I wasn't around that.
Me neither.
I'll be attending a Department of Local Services program next Thursday, I believe it is, on changes in laws, and how they affect the towns. And I think for Seminary, I signed up for-
Randolph?
Yeah, in Landtown. I don't, I don't know what's the best time, best way to get there, at 8:30 or 8:30.
Just came up early.
There is no best way, helicopter.
But I'll be doing that, and I could announce next week, but I figured I'd just say something this week. And I'll let you know what they say. I think it's like $60. I did one in the spring, it was like 75.
It's worth it.
And, yeah. I just, I'm not looking forward to the travel. And not much else.
Get the chicken.
Huh?
Get the chicken.
Chicken.
Redevelopment Authority continues to make progress towards the things you have to do before you start creating a redevelopment plan. We're looking to get some help possibly from Mass Development for sort of an initial thing that would look at Wareham Village, and get us hooked up with a team that they're involved with, includes developers, financiers, so on and so forth, real estate people, that can take, take, take looks at, at areas, and come up with recommendations for the sorts of things you might want to do there to, to improve the value of the properties there, and so forth. So, we're in a competitive situation with the City of Malden for that. So, and apparently, there's no loser here, you just get a silver medal. So, that they'll pick one first, and then the other second, because we're the only two communities that have applied for it. So, we hope to be first, to get the funding first. And then by January, they would host a day-long, what they call a charrette, where people come in and talk about this, that, and the other thing, ask questions, and it's just sort of a free-for-all forum that the Redevelopment Authority would be putting on. So, that would be sometime this winter, if we are the first ones to get the grant. So, looking forward to that, and I guess that's all I got. Mary?
I'm good.
All right. We have authorization to sign bills. We don't have any.
Nope.
How about approval of minutes for September the 10th, 2019?
I move that we approve the meeting minutes from September 10th, 2019.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. All right, that leaves us just one job.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn from Alan, seconded by Peter. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you, Wareham, see you next week.